Two thousand and twenty-four, this is a scheduled workshop of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. At this time, we'll determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Richie Duffenball, present.
Leanne Harto, present.
Matt Slaton, present.
Craig Oxford, present.
I Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. This time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We'll have a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you. All right, we do have one person signed up for, uh, public speaking. Can we read this?
Uh huh, yeah.
All right, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and read, just like we started the tradition last time. I'm gonna go ahead and read this into public record again, just for housekeeping, and then we'll go ahead and get started with public forum. All right, uh, public forum, we will now move into the portion of today's workshop. Please note that board policy requires speakers to sign up in person before the meeting is called to order. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to comments, but as designated spokesperson, only the president may respond to the speaker if needed and refer concerns to the appropriate administrator. Speakers cannot comment on agenda, can comment on agenda items, but trustees will not be able to discuss the items until they are before the board during the meeting. During special meetings such as today, uh, speakers can only comment on agenda items. So, board policy, BED local, provides the presiding officer the ability to adjust the time allotted per speaker for effective meeting management pursuant to that policy. An individual's comments to the board at today's workshop shall not exceed five minutes. The presiding officer may reduce the allotted time for each individual to speak to no less than one minute for effective meeting management. Speakers are not allowed to receive time from other individuals for today's workshop. Each speaker will receive five minutes. Specific complaints about individual district personnel are to be processed through the district's grievance policies as set out in District Policies DBA, FNG, and/or GF. Speakers are not permitted to refer to individual students or employees by name during the public comment period. Additionally, if you have a pending grievance that may come before the board in a level-three hearing, please refrain from addressing the topic of your grievance except through the grievance process. All right, with that being said, uh, Mrs. Spiegelberg, there you are, you're already there.
I told you the microphone was ready, so I came over.
Yeah, it's ready, it's ready. All right, the time is yours.
Hi, so, um, I know we're gonna be talking about budget today. I know that's gonna be a recurring monthly meeting for quite some time. And there's something that came to my attention. So, I have spoken in the past about why public schools are so important to me. It's always been a safe space for me. It's, I just love public schools. Um, and with that is also libraries. Libraries are probably my second love next to public schools. And, um, this year, I was able to work at the Scholastic Book Fair at both the sixth grade center and West. And I just absolutely loved the experience at both. The librarians are just fantastic. I got to talk with them about how it works with the money, like, you know, what is the benefit of doing these things, you know, like, it's a lot, it's a lot of work. Um, I love the fact that there were so many volunteers, you know, especially after COVID. Parents don't get to volunteer as often. And the schools also, the librarians also set up a space where teachers, if they want to supplement their in-classroom library, they can pick books off the shelves and ask parents to buy them for them. Um, so, you know, it's beneficial for teachers, it's beneficial for the librarians and students. So, I loved reading my entire life. I'm not sure if you're aware, but English is my second language. So, I, when I finally did figure out how to read in English, books were my haven. I just read all the time. But I have a daughter that does not love reading. And Scholastic Book Fair is one of the few places where she gets to pick out a book for herself. And she always reads the books that she buys and picks out. So, I feel like Scholastic Book Fairs are just so amazing in so many different ways. And I actually reached out and filed an ORR to find out how much money each individual school does make in a year from them, but I haven't received that yet from Rick. And the reason that I bring that up is that I know that there are outside political forces that try to demonize these book fairs and demonize certain books, or whatever it happens to be. And I know that in the past in other districts, that has happened. And I've heard rumblings that these outside groups are trying to do that again in certain school districts. I haven't heard about it specifically in Argyle. But with the budget issues that we're having, even considering removing something that's so beneficial to teachers, the librarians, the students, while also bringing in extra funding for those programs, would be detrimental. So, if it is something that is on the radar, that has been brought up to the district, I'm hoping that before any decisions are made, that this is something that falls into the transparency bin, and it is discussed in public. If it's not, then this is just a precautionary thing for me to tell you how much I love libraries and that we should continue supporting Scholastic Book Fair and making sure that our librarians and students and teachers have access to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this concludes the section of public forum, and we will move into the workshop now.
Hey, good afternoon. So, we're starting with our March Board Budget Workshop. Kind of what we're gonna go over today, we're gonna look at a recap of our February workshop. We're gonna look at our efficiency discussions, uh, for both non-personnel and personnel. And then we're gonna review our next steps moving forward.
So, before Ms. Stewart and Mr. Daniel and Dr. Dorden, we kind of get into the meat of this workshop, I think it's important that we circle back each time we're here to remember why we're here, um, how we got into this position as a state and then particularly as a district, uh, because sometimes people watch these for the first time and they may not have heard the backstory. So, I think it's important that we remember where we are in terms of a state, in terms of funding across the nation. We are ranked forty-second as a state of Texas for per pupil, um, allocations. That's four thousand dollars behind the national average, and that is a statistic that's out there. It's been out there. Texas fluctuates between forty-two and forty-six, but currently is at the forty-second ranking. Um, you all know, but that for those that are just kind of starting to join us and listen in, our state funding formula hasn't changed since two thousand and nineteen. That's the student basic allotment. Despite record inflation, which everyone knows and understands, the cost of everything has gone up and some places exponentially. We're seeing that, especially in our fixed costs, uh, that we're having in our budget. Now, we've had no increased funding from the state. And we all know that the legislature has a record surplus during the eighty-eighth legislative session, which was last spring, which is now a year ago. Um, four special sessions later, it still did not pass an increase to public school funding, um, in the state of Texas, despite many, many people in this community reaching out, many of you as trustees physically going to Austin. Um, and so, we will have to, we will be continuing those efforts and galvanizing those forces again. But despite all those efforts, we are still in the same place, trying to advocate for the same, um, same reasons. The other thing that's important for everyone to understand, um, as we're going through this process, is we're faced with very difficult circumstances. The reality is, it's a four-point-six-million-dollar budget deficit going into next year due to the funding cliff of the Formula Transition Grant. And there are less than one hundred districts in the state dealing with the Formula Transition Grant funding cliff, and we are one of them. We're very unique in the sense that we're fast growth, but yet we have this funding cliff going on. And that funding cliff itself is six percent of our budget. All of it together, the four-point-six million is eight percent of our budget. So, you're gonna hear across the state, especially in this area, districts having large budget cuts. Um, we have some near us that are doing twenty-eight, thirty million dollars, but that's only three to four percent of their actual operating budget. So, when you look at ours, it's eight percent of our operating budget going into next year. Um, our campuses are, just by nature, we're going to be led with, with really no supplemental student supports until we can get some help and get some reset. Um, those are the conversations and the work that we're having to do internally. Our departments are gonna lack provisions and staff to work as efficiently as they can. We're willing to, you know, to work through that. It is our new reality right now. Um, and so, with the Formula Transition Grant funding cliff, just to put it and quantify it, that's about six-hundred-and-fifty, seven-hundred dollars per student that we will be operating on less next year than we are right now with our, with our, with our, uh, basic allotment, because that funding cliff is taking six-fifty to seven-hundred off of what we, what we currently have. So, that's where that, um, begins to, that, that amount begins to rise. So, our continued challenge is, we have to build this upcoming budget and essentially the following year's budget with no additional revenue in public school funding, because the legisla, the eighty-ninth Texas legislative session will not begin until January fourteenth of next year and will not end until June second. So, this time next year, we're in the process of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, still with no answers to a legislative, uh, legislative relief. And so, that's, that's just promising that they would finish during the regular session. Who's to say they won't be in special sessions after that? So, our reality right now is two years' worth of budgets that we're having to look at, knowing that we don't have increased, increased, uh, public school funding. So, I wanted to put that back out in front of everyone, because that really is our reality. Um, it doesn't make any of these decisions easy. It doesn't make any of the conversations easy, but we are charged with looking at this holistically from an organizational level, and it will always impact people. I'm gonna talk about that at the end when we get through this today. It's going to negatively impact people. That's the cost of leadership at times. Um, but we have, every decision and recommendation we're bringing has been thought through, talked about, and, and really with lots of, lots of time and energy to try to get us where we can function with this budget deficit coming. So, I just wanted to kind of put that out as we get ready to start and get into the weeds of this.
Can you remind me, the average per student we get now, six thousand something? I know it varies by group.
Sixty-one sixty is the basic allotment.
I'm sorry.
Sixty-one sixty is the base.
Okay.
Last year's was ninety-four hundred students. So, under the Formula Transition Grant, we have been at ninety-four fifteen.
Right.
Um, and we'll drop well below that. Which makes this one of the lowest funding schools.
Yeah, we'll be down to six, another six fifty, seven hundred dollars per student.
Okay. So, this is just kind of where we're at. Y'all know this is really early for us to be talking budget workshops. Typically, we aren't speaking with you at a workshop until May, um, but we sped this up. We had our first one last month. We're here, um, on our March one, talking about our, um, we do have some non-staffing in here, but the main focus of this was the staffing plan. We're gonna have the staffing plan for you for information only on the regular board meeting in March, and then it will be an action item on the budget workshop in April second, potentially moving to the April fifteenth if it needs to be, if we're still, still in the work in progress. Um, and then we're, again, planning on a workshop in April and one in May. And then if we need one in June and July, we will, we will schedule them as needed. Um, just a reminder, um, our preliminary values come out at the end of April. Certifieds are July twenty-fifth, and then budget adoption is in August. Wanted to put this one out there, and just wanna continue this with our messaging. Um, y'all recognize the slide from last month, also from our last bond election. Just kind of a how school districts are funded and the, um, education piece, uh, that we have two buckets of money and that, uh, by law, these two buckets cannot really go over into each other. So, um, the focus of this meeting and all of our budget workshops is on that first bu, bucket, our general operating fund. So, general operating fund is gonna be your maintenance and operations. That are, those are our day-to-day expenses. It's how we keep the doors open. It's, um, our utilities, our staffing, our supplies, things like that. Um, if you were looking, comparing that to your home, that would be your groceries, your utilities, minor repairs, um, fuel for your vehicle, things like that. Then our debt service fund, uh, the second bucket there is our INS. That is where our, our bonds and our bond elections come into play. And that is how we build new buildings. It's how we do major renovations, um, our expansions, buying land, uh, things like that. Similar to, um, if you had a home, uh, budget, it would be your mortgage. If you had a mortgage at your house. Um, if you had a car loan, if you were buying land, doing a major repair at your house, those would be things that you would consider under your INS budget if those were similar to you. So, um, you know, we hear a lot at this time of the year, especially if you're, have a bond out there, about why can't you, you know, go and pay your staff out of this bond rather than building these buildings? Well, by law, we cannot pay teachers or staff with that, those funds. They're two completely separate buckets of money. So, again, all of these budget workshops are focused on our M and O side. Um, our INS will be our bond focus, and we will talk about that in the future months. Just a recap of, of what we're doing here. So, as we mentioned, school finance has not seen an increase since two thousand and nineteen, but you're gonna see this chart and you go, well, our revenue has gone up every year. Well, it's a per student funding. So, every year we have more students, our funding goes up. Um, our problem right now is if you look at twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see a plateau. That's the effect of the, uh, funding cliff from Formula Transition Grant and the fact that we still have too many students counted in twenty-three, twenty-four. We've talked about since day one of school this year that we had less students show up than what the demographic projected, less than what we budgeted on, and we're still working on amendment to come back to you. And it's gonna drop this year's funding over a million dollars. It'll put us in a couple-million-dollar deficit, uh, for this year. So, those two factors right there will put us in that plateau for twenty-four, twenty-five. Just as a reminder, if we budget and, for expenses, the way we've always done, staff, what we've done historically, and supplies and departments, um, our expenses are gonna continue to go up. And that creates our problem and where we get our budget deficit of eight percent. And that's what we've been working on, um, trying to come up with some efficiencies and some discussions of what we can do differently and how we can overcome that deficit. So, some of the things we've talked about, um, you've heard us talk about the staffing efficiency study in MoK C. They presented to you in the February regular board meeting. That's part of what we're discussing here. It's also part of what's gonna go into our April workshop. Transportation Department review, that was done in November, but that's gonna come into play in our May workshop. Um, Special Education Program review, um, it's gonna be April and/or May. Energy management, we've got that on here tonight to discuss. Um, permanent substitutes and vacant positions are also on for today. Zero-based department budgets are in progress, and this is a very, very different concept for our departments. Um, they're having to work through this process this year and go zero-based. Um, those are due back to, to us, um, I believe at the end of March, early April. That'll give us some time to review it before we bring it back to you, um, in our May workshop. We're gonna talk about summer school and job description audits in April. Uh, tonight, we're talking about position review of non-core contracted personnel with attrition. Um, class sizes for middle school and high school will be in April. For elementary class sizes, we have reviewed that. Uh, we are not gonna recommend any changes for next year for elementary class sizes. Um, Mr. Daniel did quite a bit of work on that, and just to let you know, to make a change in an F, to actually, um, make a change in FTE for next year, you're gonna have to go up to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six to one in elementary. Well, we're not recommending that at all, so that's not something we're talking about. But we had to look at it and see what the factor would be. But middle school and high school, we're still working on. Master Schedule efficiencies are also in April. And then we're also doing a staff development and travel plan review. So, um, starting this year, every campus and every department, for any dollar they, uh, put in staff development, there has to be a plan that goes along with that, has to be turned in for review with learner services to make sure that it aligns with the district plan and that there's not overlaps between the district and the campus plan and to ensure that every avenue and every area is, um, actually being considered in that. Um, and then copier options, that's part of tonight's discussion. Sorry, this afternoon is not tonight. All right, so non-personnel. So, our campus budgets, so those are resource allocation. We've talked to you all over the years of what that means. That's an amount per student as they're planning. Um, we have handed those out with a ten percent overall reduction and a ten percent contingency. So, from the campus perspective, that's a twenty percent, um, decrease in their funding for next year. We still have done comparisons with other, um, districts. We still do feel like at twenty percent, we're still very competitive in what other districts have as their, um, allocations there on their campuses. Um, our zero-based budgeting for departments, that's in progress. And kind of what that means is, in the past, we've looked at, you know, hey, you had this line item for twenty thousand dollars. You know, we're looking at a three, four percent increase for next year, we'll put it in the amount here. Well, that's what we're, not, it's not what we're doing for next year. It's everything in that line item has to be justified. There has to be a reason. They're having to prioritize. They have priorities, ones, twos, and threes. Priorities meaning if we have to come back and take some more cuts, the threes are gonna come off. The twos may come off, those type of things. And then copier lease, this requires approval by the board. So, historically, we have done copiers by not purchasing, but by a lease. And so, the majority of our copiers are under a lease. Um, we have a quote to actually buy those, 'cause this is not a lease purchase that we're in. It's just a straight lease, and when that ends, we no longer, you know, we don't own these machines. So, we have, um, a lease that we'll bring back to you. That'll save about eighty-seven thousand dollars a year if we go ahead and buy these copiers. Um, our new campuses, we are buying those as we're opening new campuses, but this would catch up the remainder of our district. And we will have that as an information item on our March agenda with hopefully action in April.
Does that come with a maintenance option?
So, the second part of that is, there is a, um, there's a cost per copy on any copy, and that's where your maintenance comes in. So, you, right now, we pay a lease payment, and then we pay a cost per copy. We, we are gonna recommend to you that we purchase these copiers and that, uh, we would continue the cost per copy, 'cause that's where the maintenance comes in. We're, we've told the campuses that the cost per copy is moving to their budgets. So, not only is it a twenty percent reduction on their budget, it's also they're taking on the cost per copy. We've also given some tools to analyze this. We've talked about it for over two years now. They've had to review bills and invoices every single month coming into this year, so they see where those costs are. And with these spreadsheets that we've provided them, it lets them know, well, okay, this machine has a color copy option. You may be printing black and white, but you chose color cop, you know, you chose a color copy, so the machine still records that as a color. It's four cents compared to a point zero-zero something cent on a true black and white. So, it's education, it's really, um, you know, bringing that in at the campus level and really looking at that. We can reduce our cost per, um, our cost per copy budgets significantly by looking at those. There, there is equipment we can put on that to say, you know, hey, you have to go in and put your code in. We can track everything. That is an additional cost. That would be on tier two. Right now, we wanna try and move it to the campuses, have them manage that. Um, if we can't bring that in under control, then we'll look at potentially putting some different, um, information on there.
What, uh, what total cost?
Cost per copy.
Not, not cost per copy. What are the total costs of copies in the district annually?
So, adding in an estimate for JRE, we're at about a hundred and eighteen to a hundred and twenty thousand per year.
Total cost of all the copies?
Of the copies, not the lease, but the copies.
Okay. So, that's probably significantly down from previous years, right? 'Cause we all have, all the students have computers now, so I'm assuming they're...
That is not down.
Yeah.
No. So, there are still things that have to be printed, and we're really looking at a management of those by, if the end user knows the information that's there, there's more of a, wait, do I really need fifteen copies? Or did I only need ten? Or did I, did I check and make sure I checked black and white only when it has a color copy option? That's, that's really what we're looking at, the management of that. If the end user doesn't know that information, what does it matter to them if they're putting copies, right? That, if they're just printing it, it doesn't matter. So, it's our education piece on our part to let the end user know that it does matter and what that information is, so that they can help us with curtailing those costs.
But even if we cut it by half, that's not even a hundred thousand dollars of savings.
It's not.
So...
Well, it's not a hundred thousand overall. Right now, we're moving that to the campus budgets and including it in their budget. So, yes, it is over a hundred thousand dollar savings on our budget right now.
Okay.
So, it's just moving to a different category and funds that they already have to allocate.
Okay. So, that hundred thousand plus per four copies in an annual is, is part of that two-eight-five? But the two-eight-five is just the difference between leasing and buying?
Two-eight-five is the cost per copies, uh, plus the energy management, plus the, uh, taking the lease out of there.
Okay, so that's included.
Yes. All right, so energy management. So, there's quite a bit that we've already done with energy management. When we look at the big dollars, if y'all remember a few years ago, we did a reboot and we did all LED lights and all of that. That's the major cost savings on energy management. So, what we have left to do are to look at our temperature offsets, and we have to look at like our exterior light times, making sure that our interior lights are only coming on when they should be coming on and going off when they should be going on. So, we've got some management to do there, and we've figured some savings in. Um, temperature offsets, we did do an offset, uh, at temperature degree changes past summer. We're looking at doing another temperature offset change this summer. Um, we have some comparison districts. Um, we can make a change and still be in line with comparison districts. So, um, there's some things we can do there.
Okay, I know everybody. I will see success if I don't see kids wearing sweatshirts in August.
I'm not sure that we will ever get all kids out of sweatshirts. I think that may be their favorite, those hoodies, but...
But not in August.
That's the microboard, every day.
Yeah, in August, because they're freezing in school.
Yes.
So, as you know, um, much of our budget, eighty percent of our budget comes from personnel. So, if we're really gonna make any kind of recapture or dent into our deficit, it's gonna have to come from personnel. Copies will help, temperature will help, but in order to get to four-point-six million, we have to look at personnel. So, these are some of the savings that we had this year. These were positions, a few of these positions we did not fill. We had two curriculum specialists that we were going to have on staff at the beginning of the year that we did not hire. We had a CT, C, CMR specialist. We started the year with six permanent subs, and as the year has gone by, we have not filled those positions. We have two left. And then there were other vacant positions that when they became open, we didn't fill them. And so, that savings for just this current year, um, is four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. As you remember from, um, last month's board meeting, MoK C did a staffing study. And our next steps with that are to evaluate the class sizes, um, at the secondary level. We've already looked at elementary. Um, we're looking at sun settings, some low enrollment electives, mostly at the high school. Um, we are evaluating and making a plan for staff that isn't utilized as well as they could be. We've actually already started some of these conversations. Uh, let's see, we're looking at, we've already done some of this too, standardizing our ratios for campus admin counselors. Looking at the master schedules at sixth grade, middle school, and high school for teachers that maybe have lunch duty or have an extra planning period for some reason. Um, we're looking, we're deep diving into those schedules. We, we started that last week as well. Um, and then in the next, probably after spring break, I'm assuming, we'll be meeting with, um, the principals and looking at their master schedule for the next school year to attempt to utilize all of their staff, um, in ways where if we have somebody that resigns, maybe there's somebody currently on staff that can actually do what they're doing. So, we, and we've already actually, we met with Coach Rogers and Mr. Byrd last Friday, and have already identified some areas that, that'll come up at a different time, but not tonight.
And we may have some that will have to be replaced, just depending on, you know, that you get into the certification situation, especially the secondary, but we will, our first glance will be, what can we, what can we plug in the best we can?
So, the word that we've been using is right sizing. We're trying to right-size all of our, um, class sizes. And so, you saw these slides at the last board meeting. These are what our current ratios are, um, by content area, and we will be running numbers on, um, increasing those by up to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, 'cause a lot of these at the high school and middle school are, are low. They're very low. So, I'm just gonna click through these, just as a recap. You can see middle school really low in your four content areas, which low is good, if you can afford it. Um, sixth grade center, probably the one that had the least give. They're pretty tight there. So, currently, what we've been working on is something we've been calling tier, our tier one. And we're looking at reductions as far away from the core content area as possible and, um, special education classroom. So, we started here in this office and looked at ways that we could potentially save money in, in the admin office. And so, some things that we are working on, and some of these we've already done, is we're repurposing the instructional services coordinator position. Um, we're looking at... We're looking at our administrative assistance in this office and kind of reassigning duties as needed. Because if you remember, we also, they also said, I mean, we were here. And so we're trying to spread some of the, the duties out. And then just looking at a general, um, district departmental reorganization. So that's here in this office.
So that work in progress, that's a minimum because it really only encompasses the top position right now because the other two are, are in progress.
These are our contract employees that we're looking at and, um, through attrition. We've had elementary, we're looking at elementary technology teachers. And we've, Dr. Jordan and I have had face-to-face meetings with, um, many people over the last week to discuss, you know, options for next school year. The elementary technology teachers, I think we talked to them back in December, the principals did. But they all have options. They all have positions. I mean, these technology teachers, they already know what grade they're teaching, um, next school year. Secondary student services positions, we have conversations with those people and they have positions if they want to fill them. That's something a little bit different because those are people that haven't been in the classroom in a while and they would have to go back to the classroom. Specialist positions at the elementary school, same thing. Many of, most of them, right, already know what grade they want to go to, so they have positions as well. We're just changing the, um, title. Um, the staffing model at JRE is going to look a little bit different just based on what we've been doing at the other elementary schools. Um, again, we're looking at subsetting some classes and looking at low enrollment and electives at the middle school. And then I've already talked about permanent subs. Did you want to add anything to that?
I think that covers it.
So most of the specialists are going to be moving to classroom positions?
Yes.
They all, they all have positions to go into.
Yeah, there were a total of six? Seven. Right, and we have plenty of positions. We've had people resign and we've had, um, JRE.
So the certification issues, they still do emergency certification? Can they choose to go get certified for something we have a need for?
They could, yes. But typically on that, if you're, the way certifications are, Mr. Daniel, correct me if I'm wrong, but usually it's a, it's a EC six or an EC. So when it's elementary, for instance, or it's a four-eight generalist, it covers any of the, any of the content areas. So it covers them without having to have a content-specific test more like a house school. So those, those are all going to be certified in any grade level essentially.
But, but if they don't, they can go get emergency certified, I mean.
Well.
Can you get, can you take the test and take the job while you're getting certified?
They can go take a test, yes. And, and back on one of those slides where it talked about, um, under utilizing, we're under utilizing the staff based on restrictive certifications. That is one of our next steps is looking at, we have some certifications on teachers right now that are, they'll have like an EC twelve sped and EC twelve PE or an EC twelve ESL. But they don't have a content area. So for secondary, you have to have a content area tied to that to be a teacher record. So like we'll be talking to those teachers, some of those about what the plan is for next year. Basically, we'll give them a year to get a content area test.
It just limits what they can do. If you're only EC through twelve special education, and we have somebody like that, there's not a lot. You can't be the teacher of record. I mean, you have to have a content area with it.
These are, these are things. It's not like they can, they can't, they can always leave, but I don't, I don't want them to do that, is what I'm saying. But these are, these are the kinds of discussions that are happening in all the districts. So they're going to face the same, they're going to be facing this challenge no matter where.
Correct. And, and that's the thing that we're trying to have as we're having these conversations to remind, remind our teachers that we, we have a place for you. We want you to stay here, especially if you're on a term contract. Because the minute you go somewhere else, you're going to a probationary somewhere. And they're either in the same position or will be next year. And so we want to be able to, to plug them into a spot. We're, we're fortunate that we're opening a campus, so we have classroom positions available. Um, until we can do a hard reset and get through this next year or two. And, you know, get our collaborative visioning plan next year, figure out what our goals and priorities are from an academic standpoint and rebuild some of those student support positions to match those goals.
Then we get into the, some of the Adwell employees. These are other conversations that Dr. Jordan and I had this week. Meeting with the nurse aide and library aides and letting them know that we have, they have the opportunity to move into another position as well. We have a, a Google form that's going to go out to each one of them and let them, let us know what they're interested in for the next school year. Those positions typically don't, it's not like a teacher that plans ahead months. It's, you know, you know they have an opening a lot of times. The aide positions, you know, they may resign and may, there's no obligation, um, for timelines. So those are what we're attempting to do with, um, our nurse aides and library aides.
And that would be possibilities of special ed aides, bus aides, student nutrition. So we have, we have.
Prepay. There's, there's, there's a lot of different options.
Can plug some of them into.
And again, opening up a new campus, there will be openings at that campus.
And I think it's important here, like right now, you know, you think of West and South and the number of students they have enrollment-wise with opening a JRE next year, all of those student enrollments are going down. So those nurse aide positions started trickling on after COVID because there was a lot going on. We also have had a lot, you know, our campuses have had a lot of students on them, but next year, we're back down to the six hundred range. Or, you know, we're, we're at a point where we are, we're not, we don't have nearly as many students on campuses.
Okay, so what we've gone over so far, we've got just kind of a recap. On the operations and non-personnel side, we had two hundred and eighty-five thousand identified. For the operations personnel, we've got, uh, over one point six million. Um, and then from the twenty-three, twenty-four reductions, we've got just under five hundred thousand for a total of two point four million. Is where we, what we've identified so far to date in sa- potential savings.
And Liz, you already, uh, unveiled like departmental budgets that started from zero base. You've, part of those number is a ten percent reduction on those.
The departmentals are still in progress.
That's not included.
That hasn't been assigned to that. What is the total of departmental budgets?
I will have to get, I don't have it on my head. I will have to get that for you. So based on our expected deficit for twenty-four, twenty-five, back to the four point six, this leaves us, um, we're a little over halfway there with identified savings. Um, so we still have around two point one million to go. So. Okay, so what we're looking at, still right sizing are the non-core classroom positions. This is what we're going to talk about in April. Um, we're looking at our elementary school PE FTEs per class period. So right now, with the number of students that we have in each elementary, we've got two, um, teacher FTEs plus one aide FTE. So there's three, three FTEs in every PE class, which is not your typical. Typically, you have two, one, one, um, teacher, one aide. Um, so we're looking at that. Um, we're also going to look at our low enrollment electives at our secondary. Uh, Dr. Jordan is working through a lot of those. So our special education preliminary anticipations we're going to look at for April. We want to look at our staffing needs due to enrollment growth that cannot be filled through attrition. So as we talked about in the past, special education is an area that's rapidly growing for us. Um, there's, there's going to be some needs there that we can't fill through attrition and we also can't reduce. There may actually be an addition here, a couple additions that we need to add in our special education department. And we're working through evaluating those right now and trying to come back with what we need to add to the budget for that department. So our next steps, um, we've got our March twenty-fifth, uh, regular board meeting and that's where you're going to have your district staffing plan uh, based on what we talked about tonight for information on the agenda. And then at the April second budget meeting, uh, we plan to have that as an action item. And again, we may have to push that to our April regular meeting, um, if we aren't quite ready for that. But we'll have additional discussions at our April budget workshop, um, that we talked about, looking at our secondary, um, and middle school, um, class sizes and as far as efficiencies in those master schedules. And then we're going to have another, uh, workshop in May, still, still kind of to be determined for June or July, depending on where we are. And then we're still, uh, working every week. We still have our district financial strategy team. You know, we're, we're looking at everything, looking at all possibilities, evaluating them. And we still have quite a bit to bring you, um, to bring forward in some next meetings. Some things we're looking at, you know, you evaluate it, go, that just doesn't work for us. Like we mentioned earlier, our elementary class size. There's, there's not a change that we would recommend next year. It doesn't mean we didn't look at it. Um, so there's going to be quite a few things like that that we may not bring you as a recommendation, but we are evaluating all possibilities that we can do.
So Liz, I know, I've, this is not anything to do with personnel, and I know Mr. Ledford's working on this. But looking at custodial costs and that was a very large contract, I mean, it was an increase from a previous contract. Can we, when can we anticipate looking at potential areas for evaluation of, of the custodial?
So that's actually on our financial strategy team meeting for this week on our agenda. Um, he's done the research and did the work, so we're going to look at that. And then it will be discussed at our April board workshop. But yes, you're right. In that, making that change last year, um, in companies and then having a company withdraw that we had selected, we had a significant increase in costs. Um, but a lot of that also has to do with the hourly rates. Um, you know, it, we had to look at what, what would we need to pay to be competitive in this area to staff a, to staff a full department? And, um, so we, we've got that. We're just starting to re- review that internally now.
So, but I would expect that every district's looking at the same, a lot of the same areas that have contracts with people like that. So it could be also a conversation I have with them to say, hey, it's either you, you get tighter on your end or we take it.
Yes, those are, those are costs, I mean, sorry, those are discussions we can have. Before we, before we make any change to a contract, we would need to have that and make sure that they could not come back and be competitive to what we felt like we could do on our own. Anything that we do at this point has some upfront costs because none of the equipment is ours. The supplies also come through the contract. But that's not to say that once we evaluate it, that it's not more beneficial to go on our own than it is with a, um, outsourced.
Have we evaluated any of the metrics on quality of service with this new provider?
So I believe the campuses all have a way to grade and send in. And that goes in through Mr. Ledford's department and review. I know at the beginning of the year, I sat in on a meeting or two because there was quite a bit going on to bring that company in. Um, as of September first, there were quite a few things that we had to go through. My understanding is that has calmed down quite a bit, but they do have a grading process that they go through.
Sorry, I took that for me once I did early.
That's okay. Um, so kind of just to recap, we're still working on a three-year plan. You've seen some of the numbers here. Um, y'all know some of the things behind this. There's some very difficult conversations. We are, like I said, just a little bit over halfway there for next year. Um, we don't anticipate any large, large numbers again to bring to you. We, some of these things that we're looking at moving forward may be a year out or two years out. That's not to say that we aren't going to still find some efficiencies left, but we feel like we still have to work out a three-year plan. Um, we are growing. We do know that. There, we're expected to have more students next year, more students a year after. A growing district is much better in this situation than someone who's not growing or that's decreasing in enrollment. That is a whole different conversation. But where we're at right now and what we've identified, we feel like, um, we still need to look at a three-year plan. So for the April second workshop, the preliminary agenda, we're going to look at actually some additional revenue generating ideas. Vader is the biggest one there. We'll have quite a bit of in-depth discussion on that in April. Um, a scholar academy program. And then we've got some others that aren't as high dollar amounts, but they're still worth discussing as we walk through this process. And then we're going to look at the additional right sizing with our personnel, our class size ratios. Remember, those are middle school and high school. Reducing FTEs in athletics and fine arts. Sun setting of low enrollments, um, or local credit electives at the high school. And then our campus administrative ratios, our APs and our counselors, we're reviewing those. Um, and then we're doing a reconsideration of summer school offerings. And that would actually begin this year, um, rather than waiting until the next fiscal year.
In regards to reducing the amount?
Yes.
What we, what we don't have to offer.
We, we currently offer, and y'all please jump in here if I say something wrong here, but we currently offer more than is required. And we have offered that for quite some time. So we're looking at the benefits that versus the cost and what is actually required and what we feel like we still need to continue it.
So as we're kind of coming to a close on our part, and then obviously we'll open it up for workshop and, and conversation with the board. Um, we, we have been in front of every staff, except the high school. That meeting is this Wednesday. So every staff has had the same meeting with all of us. We have spent and gone through this, many of the slides that you have seen. There have been face-to-face meetings with staff, there have been ma- as a whole. And then there's been face-to-face meetings with any individual that was discussed today in today's workshop. Because the last thing that we want to do is for someone to hear about it from a workshop and not have heard it from us as a district. Uh, we have, it's paramount that we have these conversations with the, with these people, so they're hearing it from us. Primary, first and foremost, um, coming from, from the district and the campus administration. So they understand what's going on and they also understand what their options are. Uh, because all of that can get spun into a lot of different directions. I've lived that experience. Um, and so we don't want that to happen. We want them to know exactly what their options are so that they understand, um, what, what their, you know, what the direction is moving forward. Within those conversations that we've been having on our campuses, um, I've been bringing back to them a conversation we had during convocation. And so I've been showing this slide to every, to every staff that we've been, that we've been in front of. This slide came from convocation. And back in August, I don't know that I would have thought this is where we would be in February and having to live this out every day. But that's our job and that's what we're supposed to do. And that's how we lead this district through a crisis. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to continue moving forward. But all three of these are holding true right now. Um, we're making very difficult decisions as the board will have to make very difficult decisions. Some of these are negatively impacting people. We're still providing jobs for people. It just may not be in the same capacity that they've had. And so that's, can be uncomfortable for some. You know, we don't, we don't always, we're attempting to do the best for everyone, but it doesn't always work out that way. And then most importantly, um, we talked about this in convocation and, and we're coming back to it full circle. We will be misunderstood. And it's not about, it's not about the district defending themselves or the board defending themselves. It's about us being able to make sure everyone gets clear communication and everyone knows what the messaging is. And we have, I feel like we have done that with our staffs. Because no one can say that we haven't been to see them personally, whether it's been in large group or individual meetings. And then we will do the same thing after spring break and we will go back and talk to them about the bond. Because as Ms. Stewart mentioned, we have two buckets of money. So we have to do a very good job of making sure everybody understands M and O, which is where we are right now, and then the bond side of that. They're two totally different things. And it's our responsibility to educate everyone on that. So we will be coming back to them and having the same face-to-face meetings on a different topic. But our staff has been incredible. I've, I've mentioned, I've been through this before. And I think what I keep hearing from our staff and from, from the people sitting right here beside me that have had to have some of these very difficult conversations is the people in Argyle want to be in Argyle. And while they don't necessarily, they don't like what they're hearing right now, they understand it deep down and they're willing to be a part of the team. And so that speaks volumes for this district. And it's, when I talk to my counterparts across, especially North Texas right now, that's not the feelings they're having. And that's not the conversations they're having. So I just want to commend our staff, our principals, our teachers, our peers, everybody. Because I, I truly, I mean, this is why I wanted to be in Argyle. Not because of this, but because of the reactions with this. I mean, people are here and want to be here. And as hard as this is and as hard as last week was for a lot of reasons, we were still excited to be here today and we're excited to move forward, even though some of this is, this is temporary and we're going to get out of it. But it's going to take all of us to get out of it. And so I think it's important that we, we continue to remind and, and bring this back to the forefront and say, we're going to get through this. So I just want to share with you, um, board and in our community, what we've been talking about with, with our staff so that everyone is hearing the same message.
And again, it's not something we, uh, independently put ourselves into.
Absolutely.
We are living our legislators in action. And, uh, again, I, I'll, I'll speak individually. It's nothing I haven't said to our legislators to their face. Maybe a communication like you're, you're using educators and public ed as your political pawn. And that's, it's just, it's gross. And so there are people suffering and ultimately we're, as a district, not able to focus on our why. Because we're focused on finances that's out of. Um, because we're focused on finances that's out of our control. So, you know, just making that clear, that this isn't, we made a financial oops and we used common in the wrong place.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Um, that's not it at all, so, um, and just appreciative of all the advocacy efforts that this community has stepped up to, um, this district stepped up to, we just have to keep it up.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I have a comment and a question. Um, my comment, which I know I've told a number of people around here, is that, and I know you guys have heard this, but I was personally affected in my job as an educator in a, in a district that I worked in that had to do with reduction of cut lists. Um, in fact, they had a cut list for three years, and I made it through to the third year. Feeling guilty though, but I made it through to the third year. And what happened was, is I was served five for other things, I got moved to a different position, life goes on. The, um, department that I was in, the central office in the department that I was a part of, actually came back after a couple of years. Because the legislature did their thing, and it helped out financially with all districts. And, um, so you're right, it is a, it, it is a short-term thing, but it stinks while it's happening. Um, and we kinda did the same thing, I mean, it's just you, you were there for the good of the cause, I wanted to stay in the district, and it's just what you do. Um, and I had a great time in my new job, so that was good. Um, my question is, so I mean, I, I'm gonna tell you, I understand the feelings of people who are being affected by this, because I was personally affected myself. Um, my other question is, I know you're looking at another one point two with the, the personnel and all of that. I mean, we're still a pretty far distance, what hope do we have that we're even gonna come close to four point six, four point eight?
I don't know that we're gonna come close to four point six going into next year.
Okay.
I think that the, the, the long-term plan will lead to get to a livable point for next year.
Okay.
Um, and then look at the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and see, um, where does our growth get us? What staff do we need to add at that point, and so we can do some projections. Um, we've actually asked for a demographic for a breakdown on, uh, not just the future years, but by campus, our grade level, so we can actually do a staffing analysis. We know that that'll change as the information changes, but that we can at least have a planning tool to, to come up with some form of look at twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven. So that, if we can get to what a, a, a point that we feel is livable for next year, based on what would happen in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven.
With the legislature.
With living off fund balance.
Yeah, livable, yeah, we have a livable sign out.
Right.
Helping TAV is our.
If people get it.
The, the, the TAV, um, for the M and O side, um, if it goes up ten percent, if it goes up five percent, it doesn't change much for us. Because remember, that's a balance on our per student state and local. TAV does affect the INS side quite a bit, that growth there. Um, I actually went to a meeting this morning on the TAV and what it may look like, and, um, he had some initial estimates, that we're still have some significant growth, uh, for next year. Um, or at least the preliminary look on that is. We won't get the actual data until the end of April. Um, but that growth in students, if we're gonna add another eight percent of students, nine percent of students every single year, and we can give you a, a projection of that. And say, yes, this, this is a significant hit on our fund balance, not just this year, but for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we feel like it's livable based on what we think twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven may be. Um, that's, that's where we're at right now.
And any, Dr. McDay, any, any of these FTE reductions, whether it be on class size ratio, athletics, fine arts, et cetera. Some of those are things that may be leaving and not replacing, so that would be a savings. Some may be as thing, as people resign, we don't, and so we may not realize all of it going into next year, depending on the level of resignation or the, the, does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so we're working, we're working through that, um, a- as we go, but those amounts are not in the one point two right now. So this'll be, this will be additional when we come back in April, anything, anything else we're able to, to find in there.
Okay.
Um.
I, I was just, you can finish, I'm sorry.
No, I, no, just the, the last thing I was gonna say is, you know, we, we mentioned this to our, um, groups as we've been going on a meeting with all our staffs. We have a group right now that we're meeting with, and we meet again this Friday morning, and it's the North Texas Superintendent CFO's basically Financial Strategy Team. And so, and our communications teams are in those, and we have another one on Friday. And so the districts that are currently on block scheduling, um, are those that are, are one, that's one of their cost savings measures. Blocks, block scheduling back to a traditional is a million, million and a half a year. Um, districts that operate in a nine, ten, eleven, twelve campus, or a nine freshman campus with a nine, ten, or twelve, that have to use a block because of their traveling, they don't have the luxury of getting rid of that. So that one point five million, they can't, they can't realize, because they can't change their schedule because of their configuration of their high schools.
With someone like South Lake.
Yes, correct.
Right.
And so I know, you know, uh, Greg Moncolli Bill went away from their block scheduling this last year to an eight-period day, and so we've, we've talked to them about their cost savings and that. Uh, but we already have a traditional schedule, so we are running the most efficient master schedule, if you will, bell schedule that there is. And so we're still trying to pull through some other additional things here. Um, the other thing we have talked with our staffs about is we have been very clear that that four point six million, it has JRE opening in it, but it does not have a compensation increase in it. So we've been very clear with them that it doesn't mean we aren't going to build and look at the what-ifs, but right now, that deficit does not have a compensation increase in it. Which all of our groups that we're meeting with, uh, uh, districts we're meeting with are, they're, that's the same messaging. So it's either none at all, or we're gonna build it, and if something happens, then we might be able to do this apart, so I just wanted to share that.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, we did the same thing in the district, we all knew. Um, nobody lost their job, which was nice, I just wanted to, you know, give promise and hope to people, and it didn't last forever. Um, and you just learn to pivot and, and do what you need to do, so I compliment all of you guys. I, this is not an easy task at all, um, the stuff that you've been doing, one, to research everything, but two, to have those tough conversations. Um, that's not easy at all.
Right.
I had two quick ones, I guess, for workshop purposes, um, either Dr. Carpenter or Liz. Um, would you mind just going through what a Vader is?
Yeah.
Um, so that we have that on the workshop for everyone to know about.
So Vader's a voter-approved tax rate election. Um, those that, you were here in two thousand twelve, remember at that point in time, it was called a TRE, a Tax Ratification Election. So before that time, the state, the way the state's funding is set up, every district is allowed to have up to seventeen pennies in addition to what the state says your maximum compressed M and O tax rate is. Um, and there's some of those you can add without voter approval, I think four or five pennies, something like that. But all that to say, back in two thousand twelve, when we were having, um, we were actually graduating more seniors than we were enrolling in kindergarten, which that's hard to imagine at this point in time, right? But our enrollment was actually stat up or decreasing. Um, we looked at ten pennies, and that's what we went to our voters for, and we asked our voters for approval to add ten pennies to our M and O tax rate, so it's ten of those seventeen. And the voters approved that, and the reason we didn't do the full seventeen at the time is because, based on what we needed in our budget and some different factors, the seventeen didn't make sense for us at the time. We only asked for what we felt like we had to have. So that leaves us with seven pennies, and I'm gonna tell you, when we get into the details, it's actually seven point seven, but, um, seven pennies, basically, that we can go and ask our voters for. Um, that Vader can potentially bring in a net of two point five million. But there are timing issues with a Vader. We are not allowed to have a Vader anytime we want. Usually you could set an election anytime, and back in two thousand twelve, we had one in fall. Um, then it went to, you could have an election in the May election or the November election, and they've come back and changed it, you know, in the recent years, and said, no, you can only have it in November. So if we come to you and recommend a Vader, and the board so chooses to go, to say, yes, we would like to have that, there's timing things that we have to do, and we also have to do an efficiency audit. We have to contract out with somebody, that's part of the law, that says you have to have an efficiency audit to go through this process. And then you can call the, um, election in November, but you've already built your budget and started your year. You don't know whether that, um, passes or not, so you can't count on that in your budget moving forward. Um, so that's kind of where we're at, and what we wanna talk through and discuss with the board at our next workshop. But it is a net of about two and a half million potential, um, for us, which-
And does that continue as a, as a permanent, like the ten cents, it's, the seven cents just stays in your tax rate?
It is there, um, there's a, there's one factor that reduces that, and that's why it's been reduced from ten to nine point three. Anytime there's an increase in the basic allotment, the state compresses those extra pennies that our voters said we could have, and that's why we went from ten to nine point three.
In twenty nineteen.
In twenty nineteen. And so if the legislature ever did anything else, it would be compressed a little, but essentially, you have those pennies from, from there moving forward. Um, there's golden pennies and there's copper pennies. Um, we have all the golden pennies that we can have, that's actually, you can bring in more money on a golden penny than you can a copper penny. A copper penny is subject to recapture, and there's a limit of what we can bring in. There's a, a dollar amount per penny per water that you're allowed to keep as a district, and that net for us would be two point five million. That's our best estimate that's out there right now.
And then my, my second thing, and stop talking, I'll be like, Mr. F. Clark, I gave up this time. Way early in the process.
I never officially give up my time.
It was not happening.
No, Mr. Slaton over here is waiting his turn.
Right.
He is.
Uh, but we've looked at, we've talked briefly about transportation.
Yes.
And looking at bus routes and, um, things like that. At, at what point does that study come out, and we look at the efficiencies around school transportation?
So we have this, we have that scheduled for the May workshop.
Okay.
Um, but we're looking at all things transportation, some of it's from that efficiency study, some of it's not. Um, we're looking at our bell schedules, and changing where a two-tier system, what a three-tier system would do, the savings from that. But what effect does that have on your starting in times of all your campuses? Is it worth, you know, is the savings worth making the change? Um, we're looking at a pay-to-ride system, um, some of our local districts have a pay-to-ride system. The state says that, um, transportation is not a requirement for school districts, only in certain special education instances is it. Most districts choose to provide transportation, but, you know, we can charge, but at what rate would we be putting back on our parents that would actually bring in a net, um, income for us on that? So you have to weigh the options on that. Um, I believe we were looking at some different, um, things with charter buses, and when we used charter buses. Um, you know, at what distance will we take a yellow bus? Um, who drives those buses, and, and what, um, the different organizations that, that need, require buses, who the drivers are? I'm sure I'm forgetting something, anybody else remember on transportation?
Expanding the, or decreasing the distance, or increasing the-
Yes, we were looking at the two-mile versus three-mile distance on, uh, walk or ride. Um, for us, the way that we're set up, that doesn't make much difference for us, because if we do implement a three-mile, we, you know, we've got quite a few hazardous routes that I'm gonna tell you, I don't feel like as an administration we would recommend that to you. Um, if you look at a neighborhood schools or elementarys that are in the, the master plan neighborhoods, most of those are set up that you can walk to. But if you go back and you look at our middle school, there's only a couple of neighborhoods that actually can walk there, that wouldn't have to cross a railroad or a major highway. And we don't feel like we could even say a, a, a three mile walk there, that we don't feel like that's the best for our students. But we have looked at it, and we've put some cost factors to it, it just probably would not be the one thing that we'll recommend. Um, not to say that we aren't looking at changing those, um, and, and whatever efficiencies we can make in that.
Yeah, we don't wanna create efficiency to increase danger.
Correct. Correct. Um, so again, some things that we're looking at not, aren't necessarily gonna come back to as a recommendation, it doesn't mean that we aren't looking at it. Some other things with transportation, um-
Three, the three-tier buses, like the buses.
Yes, the three-tier also, thank you, uh, means that we don't have to buy as many buses, cause it wouldn't take as many buses to do your routes. But again, that means you're starting in time for all your schools.
Trickle down on other things.
It is, so right now, we're looking at, we'd have to have forty-five minutes between each starting and time, um, that's what you need during your routes. Um, we think we can squeeze the middle school and high school time a little bit, but, um, we're still working on that. Um, then you're gonna look into, um, you know, how we can combine routes, you know, our bus driver training. That was something really big, and that, um, information that we looked at with TASBO, we need to, uh, become more efficient. We've already put this process in place, but become more efficient with a full-time trainer that can actually get our bus drivers. Right now, before this started, it was taking us up to eight weeks to take a driver from the time they started till the time they could get behind a bus and actually drive a route. You can decrease that down to about two weeks, and with our bus driver shortage, we need to decrease that time from the moment that we've offered a job to somebody, from the time they can actually take a route. You know, we continually are short of bus drivers. Um, there's some things that we can do to minimize the number of routes that would help with that, but would be well, you know, if we were willing to, to type the offset to that. But that is something that we are looking at, and we plan on discussing in May.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Slaton.
Well, and just, just to simplify things, all things being equal, we already have the four point six million dollar deficit down by two point four and change.
That's correct.
It gives us two point one one five.
Yes.
Right, so as we're talking about, you know, covering that, we've already cut half of it.
That's correct.
Now, obviously, we don't have a lot of other opportunities to cut further, but I just appreciate all that you guys have done, all the time you've put in, the difficult conversations with folks, um, and I think you guys have done it, you know, faced with something uncomfortable, have done a, a great job, so I appreciate it.
I'd express the same thing, sincere respect, for not only what you've had to do, but also, you got in front of this months ago, knowing that we weren't getting what we needed from the legislation, and you tried to do every effort you could, and I appreciate that, and I think the community appreciates that, and thank you. And I hate that you're having to go through these tough discussions, but these are, you've done it with integrity, it was well thought out, so I thank you for that. Uh, the only specific questions I have are, uh, how conservative is the revenue basis that you judge on our budget deficit?
So right now, it's based solely off the demographer's estimate, um, and so it is with that estimate if, historically, what's happened there is we've grown more than the demographer anticipated. So we've been able to come back to you later and say, hey, springtime, we're gonna increase our revenue, and we've got a much better budget year, right? We know we missed that this year, uh, the demographer missed the number of students, you know, we started the year with two hundred students short of what his mark was for us. Um, so there's not additional growth built in his numbers at all, but there's not less than what he's put in there. So our, our numbers are solely off of that. Um, you know, if we go back to having a, a, a higher growth year than what he anticipated, it'll be a better year in the end. But we won't know that until we actually start school and go through the first couple of weeks next year, so we're strictly using his numbers.
Okay, so had those come true, uh, we are legally obligated to, what, have two months to our fund balance?
Um, yes, in our policy, I believe it says two months, the running rule of thumb that most people operate under, that we've always operated under, unwritten rule, is three months, which is twenty-five percent. Um, and that's kind of the, uh, gauge that we're looking at, we're sitting at, we started the year twenty-six percent. We will end the year below twenty-five more than likely, um, with what we're looking at for this year. Um, by not making up all of the deficit for twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll go even further. Um, but part of that three-year plan, we've gotta get back to in that third year and possibly in that fourth year, we've gotta build that back to where we have a comfort level of sitting in our fund balance. That does affect many things, right? It affects your cash flow, um, we've gotta look at that, and, cause you know, schools don't have, you don't have a standard, you're getting this much revenue every single month. Some of your revenue comes, you know, the majority of your revenue here, since we're locally tax-based, we're hiring that, comes in the December, January, and February months, right? You've gotta make it the rest of the year and make sure that you have enough sitting in there to, to make a cash flow. Um, your bond rating also is, is on that, there's quite a bit on there that, that's rated in your bond rating. But then there's also quite a few things at the state level that they look at on our fund balance and actually require some things. Um, and one of those is a sixty-day cash on hand, that's their threshold level, is, is one of, one of their sixty days.
So if we had to fund the deficit through the fund balance, we'd still be above the sixty days?
We, we should stay above the sixty days. Um, in these presentations, we've talked this through with our campuses, I've told them, you know, yes, are we gonna have to go in and increase our deficit for this year? We know that, we know that we've missed our mark on students. But typically, and I'm gonna say typically because you know, you can't control every factor in the future, but typically, we spend less than what we budget. You know, every department and every campus kind of has a little bit left over at the end. So we should end the year a little, you know, if we come back and increase that revenue estimate, we saw, decrease that revenue estimate and tell you we're at two and a half million dollar deficit, we hope to finish the year a little bit better than that, but we're not gonna make up a million dollars in that unless we have some significant changes. Now, we showed you some savings that we are counting on for this year, and we'll incorporate that into our budget amendment moving forward. Um, but we should drop below twenty-five percent at the end of this year.
And we've also been, you, some of the conversations you've had with campuses and departments is this spending towards the end of the year.
That's correct, we've, we've asked them to really look at anything that, typically at this point in the year, and we sent out these deadlines before we had these conversations with them. Typically, you're in a, finish up all your spending, you're anything that you would need between now and the end of this school year, and then we give them a couple of weeks- And then we give them a couple of week window to look at what they would need for those first couple of weeks in August, because our fiscal year ends August 31, but they start school, um, what, August 18th, August 20th, something like that. So they've got a couple of weeks they have to operate, so we give them some time in the spring to place some orders for that. And what we've asked them to do is ran those orders in. Um, you know, if it's not absolutely necessary, we don't need to be purchasing those at this point in time. Um, and so we're, we're starting, but, you know, we're, we're already well into a, a budget year, so it's, it's not gonna generate a large amount of savings, but I think it's a, it's a point that needs to be made in the thought process that we need to get into moving forward, that we need to look at whether absolute necessary, um, to function versus something that we may just want.
And one last thing to communicate is, um, you know, we had hoped that we would go to a funding based off of actual students.
Right.
But the state denied that also, or didn't vote on it. So I, parents need to know there's a process where the given percentage of students are out there at a certain day is what we get funded on.
That's right.
So, and that's why we've had a campaign, get your kids to school, right, because that's, it affects funding
Yes.
for our district and.
We actually, this morning, she's gonna run us some quantitative measures on, uh, just a half percent to a 1% increase in attendance rate and what that generates for us, because you're exactly right, we staff on enrollment and we are paid on student attendance.
And one of the few states left that actually pay on attendance rather than enrollment. I mean, we can't go into a classroom and pay, we want a 22 to 1 ratio. Okay, well, we're gonna put 24 students in there because we think only 22 are gonna show up every day. You can't staff based on that. You have to staff on what you think your actual enrollment is. But our revenue is only based on how often we show up.
Shows up, yep.
So that, that will soon come as well, as we're gonna do some, put some metrics to that, quantify that.
I think that's a, a message that is important to get out to parents as well. You know, on those iffy days maybe every once in a while, because the every day that they're out is less money than we get.
You know, it's a fine line. We don't want to encourage people to come to school or.
Sick, right, absolutely.
But if, you know, it's just another reason that you're out, we're gonna encourage you to come
Yeah.
and to show up. Number one, it's also a benefit to their education, right? The more time, like, the more seat time that student has, the better for it is, is for them educationally.
It's common sense. It is logical. I mean, it is.
Anything else? Anybody else?
I'm just gonna say what Josh Westromley says, since he's not here, but everyone should be aware that there is $4 billion certified by the state for education that they're holding until they get their P E T project. And Wednesday morning, we'll know who our representatives are, and I think it's time to give them something.
Know how we're here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Till they need again.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Joshua.
Proxy.
I know.
That's right. All right, well, thank you all for the discussion and continued direction, and we will be back in the same setup on April 2nd with more information.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.